All right, good afternoon and welcome to the March 28th Joint Meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have roll call for City Council, please?
Yes, City Council members Asadrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Najarian. Mayor Kasakian.
And may we have roll call for the Housing Authority, please?
Yes, Housing Authority members Ajinian.
Here.
Asadrian.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Parazian.
Here.
Chair Brotman.
Here.
All right, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the Tuesday, March 28, 2023 Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, March 23rd, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Great, thank you. And we have two items before us today. Can we have the first item read into the record?
Yes, first item, Community Development Regarding Establishment of the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust. A joint powers agency created pursuant to Senate Bill Number 1177, an appointment of council member to serve as a representative to the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust Board, along with a designated alternate. A City Council Resolution Approving the Establishment of the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust, a joint powers authority created pursuant to Senate Bill Number 1177. B City Council Motion Adopting a Council Member, Appointing a Council Member to Serve as a Board of Director Representative to the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust Board, along with a designated alternate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, members of City Council, Chair Brotman, members of the Housing Authority. This is, as it was read into the record, a new regional housing trust that once established, the JPA established. It will use and award funds for the development of affordable housing in the tri-city area, as well as the day-to-day operation of the trust. With that, I'll turn it over to Peter Zovek, our Assistant Director of Community Development, to present this item for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority. This is kind of exciting times in that we're presenting an item to you that is, doesn't happen quite often, and it's important because of a number of things, and we'll be able to go through it in the presentation. As stated by the City Manager, staff is asking for approval of a joint powers agreement establishing the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust. And we're also seeking appointment of a council member to serve as a representative on that regional housing trust, as well as a designated alternate to serve on the trust. Okay. The regional housing trust was established at the state level by SB 1177. It authorized, that piece of legislation authorized the creation of the regional housing trust. It was signed by the governor back in August of 2022, and it was a year-long effort of staff working with Senator Portantino in putting that legislation together and pushing it through. SB 1177 authorizes the establishment of the regional housing trust to fund the planning and construction of housing, affordable housing, receive public funds, and to authorize and issue bonds for the purposes of funding affordable housing for people of extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income households. Additionally, an appropriation was made, currently as SB 1177 was going through the legislative process, an appropriation was made by Senator Portantino to provide seed money for the regional housing trust. An appropriation request of $23 million was made in the state budget, and it was approved. And coincidentally, an hour ago, I got the check, although it's not made out in my name. It's made out to the City of Glendale, and it's $23 million. It was agreed that Glendale would initially receive this money, deposit it until the establishment of the JPA, at which point we will transfer the funding over. But it was a big achievement, when I had said earlier, because given the state, of the state's financial conditions this year, we never would have been able to receive any money. It was just kind of a one-year window when the state had a surplus of funding. They were funding proposals at that time. It was an idea to ask money, for money, in addition to asking for the legislation, and it was approved. And so it was very timely, and as I said, I don't think it'll happen again, certainly not this year and the next coming years, seeing how they're discussing the budget and the status of that. As we see it, the regional housing trust will be a critical tool to generate funding in the tri-city area for the creation of affordable housing. The three cities of Pasadena, Glendale, and Burbank have a history of providing affordable housing at different levels and at different numbers, and we think this regional housing trust could assist. We believe it could provide a nice supplement to the individual cities and the funding that they have for their projects. So we see it as an ability to either stretch an individual city's existing funding by maybe funding less at the city level and then going to the regional housing trust and asking for supplemental funding, so we can save money at the city level, or be able to ask for money at the regional housing trust that we may not have to ask for and compete for at the state level, depending upon levels. So we see this as a critical tool for funding affordable housing. So what we've put together is that the staff of the three cities have put together a drafted joint powers agreement, and we are seeking your approval of it today. Burbank has approved the JPA. That was done on February 28th. They've appointed City Councilmember Nikki Perez to serve as the Burbank's Board of Director on the regional housing trust. Pasadena's was approved last night, March 27th, and they've appointed Mayor Gordo to serve on the regional housing trust. The joint powers agreement is a basic agreement that we've drafted, putting together most of the categories that we think are important in establishing a joint powers agreement. The JPA covers creation and purpose, the terms of the regional housing trust, powers and duties, the members, the Board of Directors, additional officers and employees, financial provisions that establishes amendment procedures, lays out some non-liability for obligation provisions, provisions for withdrawal of parties, and provisions talking about notices and miscellaneous categories. Highlights of the agreement include the following. Once established, the regional housing trust can be terminated by agreement of all parties subject to the retirement of all outstanding loans and bonds. As I mentioned earlier, one of the abilities or one of the tools and functions that this regional housing trust could possibly have is issuing bonds. So with that comes obligations, and those are long-term obligations. So that's a concern when talking about termination of the agreement of the trust. We do have to make sure that there's a retirement of all outstanding loans and bonds. If terminated, the assets of the regional housing trust would be distributed to the members in proportion to contributions. Right now, we have talked about, brought up the fact that we have an additional allocation of $23 million in seed money. That should not stop the trust from going out and seeking other sources of funds and putting that into their accounts to fund affordable housing. There are other categories of money that the trust can apply for as a trust. The state has a couple of programs that allow for housing trust funds to apply and getting award of funds. There's also, doesn't preclude us from also receiving funding either individually as a city or as a regional housing trust from the newly established, the nickname is La Casa, the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency. That was also formed at the same time as SB 1177 at the state level, passed at the state level into law. It's a 21-member Board of Directors that served on this board, and it looks at solving the housing and providing the funding to solve housing issues in all of Los Angeles County. So nothing prevents our regional housing trust from either applying directly for funding through them, or individually, as the City of Glendale can go and apply for a direct pot of money. So we don't see this necessarily as the Housing Authority turning over any of its existing affordable housing funds to them for administration. We see it as a supplement to whatever we fund at this level, and then have a project go and seek additional funding through them. Is that clear?
It is, thank you.
In addition to funding and financing affordable housing, the regional housing trust has the ability to enter into contracts, contract out and hire staff and consultants, the ability to sue and be sued, receive funding, invest funding, apply for letters of credit, incur debt, employ a legal counsel and other professional services that would be needed for a regional housing trust, certainly staff, attorneys, as well as an auditing firm to handle the financing. The regional housing trust would be able to enforce affordable housing covenants, be able to rent space and acquire, hold, or dispose of property. The Board of Directors will be governed by a Board of Directors made up of three directors, and they would be made up of elected city officials from each party belonging to the trust, along with a designated alternate. The directors shall serve two-year terms. Directors are constrained by a two-year term limit, and directors shall serve without compensation but may be reimbursed for any expenses incurred in connection with the service or their service on the regional housing trust. Meetings will be held and conducted in accordance with the Brown Act. Budget and auditing procedures must be implemented and conducted annually of the regional housing trust. Debts, liabilities, and obligations of the trust are not considered debts, liabilities, and obligations of the parties, so they cannot pass on to individual cities. Any party may withdraw from the regional housing trust upon adoption of resolution of the regional housing trust. Once the Board of Directors are in place and adopt bylaws, then the next step would be to develop an operations agreement and to flesh out and formalize the activities of the regional housing trust. And those areas of negotiation for the operations agreement would include funds and a discussion of a fair share of funds to each city, funding criteria, how projects will be funded, what levels, maximums, minimums, things like that, much of what the Housing Authority decides on its individual projects and how they fund, and then management, program management and Staff from the three cities recommend utilizing a consultant to assist with the development of the operations agreement, to ensure an equitable agreement for all parties. And furthermore, a consultant could assist with the recruitment and selection of regional housing trust staff that may be needed to be able to administer and run the regional housing trust. We envision some type of hourly executive director, some hourly staff as well to assist with day-to-day administration, and again, some outside consultants to assist. This timeline is already out of date. We had anticipated coming to the respective councils in February. It was delayed, so really what we're looking at is for April of 2023, not March, to try and establish our first board meeting. And in that first board meeting, look at appointing a chairperson and vice-chairperson, possible, for sure, discussion, possible selection of a consultant if the board feels that there's enough information to do that. We also need to start talking about, at a staff level, once this is all approved, about meeting locations. We anticipate maybe some type of temporary meeting location. It may be rotating in the very beginning between the three cities until we find and secure a more permanent meeting location for this trust. And then as the work moves along, we look at, as I said, the development of operations agreement, and then a first round of projects to be funded. Hopefully, we're looking at, hopefully by summertime, we might be able to have some projects appear before the regional housing trust and maybe some funding allocations made to them. Nope. Let me just see. Somehow skipped out of the presentation. Let me just make sure if I missed anything.
I think that's...
That was it. There was just questions.
No, absolutely. All right, any questions? Sure.
I know, looking at the timeline, March 23 is just about over for this appointment of chairperson, vice-chairperson. When does the bylaws get implemented?
They would be discussed by the board members at their first meeting.
By next month? In the April-June?
In the April-June meetings, yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, first question would be, is, you know, what is the day-one staff support model look like before we have a consultant, before we have staff, before we have our bylaws, that first meeting?
Most likely, it'll be collaborative effort between staff of the three cities.
Okay, so you're prepared, staff from the three cities are prepared to kind of step in and do some pro bono work?
We've taken it this far, for sure. So we anticipate being there for the trust up until the point we can get it up and running with staffing.
Okay, now, the model for the Arroyo Verdugo's, Arroyo Verdugo's Communities JPA, that has, you know, one of the cities, I guess, volunteering a staff member to act as executive director, is that a model that we might be interested in?
I don't think so. I think I would have, I think there are concerns with having any one city have a member serve as an executive director, and I think that that's where the discussion of having an hourly contracted-out employee serve on that position would be best.
I wonder if we'll get the same kind of caliber of individual on an hourly basis, but I guess that's something that the board will discuss.
Correct.
Okay. My other question has to do with bonds. I'm just trying to think about how a JPA with very few assets raises bonds. Would it be, would these be kind of project financing arrangements? I mean, what would be the security?
Initially, it would be, we would envision it being project-specific bonds.
Okay.
It is an area that would require an additional consulting with an outside legal firm, as well as bond counsel. It's a new concept, so it's difficult for me to provide you much information about it, but we felt it was important enough to include as a power of the JPA, because we do see it as a potential. You're seeing through this workforce housing development projects, there are a number of JPAs that have been formed to facilitate those types of projects. We saw no reason why a regional housing trust shouldn't have that ability, and hopefully it might be something we'd be able to exercise moving forward. It certainly wouldn't, I don't foresee it being one of the first types of projects the trust would be doing. I think that'll have to come with time and education and some experience in it before looking at a first bond project. But it was easier to include now into the legislation than it was just trying to see it after that.
Yeah, I was just trying to think about how it works.
So is staff.
I don't know if it would be like the CalCHA or the CSCDA-type model?
It could be similar to those models, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I feel the whole $23 million in your hand.
That was pretty nice, until I read it, the fine-tuning. It did say, "Attention, Peter Zovek," but it was on the remittance, not necessarily in the check.
Looks kind of light.
And it doesn't have any commas in it, so it looks like it's much bigger than 23 million, 2.3 billion.
Excellent.
But I was gonna say, we did have a discussion when we had that slide to talk about funding allocations and something that's fair. Staff did have a discussion, and we want to make sure that the council is aware of our concerns as well. With initial seed money, we felt it was important that it not just go into a general pot that could be swallowed up by a couple of projects. We wanted to make sure all three agencies, since it is an initial funding amount, have some access to some of that 23 million. So one thing we had talked about, and we want to make sure it's being brought up when the Board of Directors start to discuss this, is the idea of maybe setting aside of the 23 million, maybe 2 million for staffing for a number of years, and then the remaining 21 million could be allocated to projects. And being that it is seed money, looking at reserving 7 million for each city and their respective projects, and then moving forward with new revenue, somehow coming up with some type of formula that then, if not first come, first serve, or certain amount of money to each city on some proportional basis, something like that moving forward. Because we didn't want to all have to then scramble, once it's established, to see who can eat up and take, because a lot of that money can be swallowed up by just a small number of projects.
Sure.
So we want to make sure we make it last and we make it fair, at least in the initial proceedings.
So I have another question. You mentioned that the city, individual cities can apply for grants, La Casa. Can we apply for state funds as well?
The regional housing trust?
No, Glendale, the city, our city.
We have applied in the past for certain programs. I mentioned the state, because they have certain programs set up for housing trust funds. And so the regional housing trust can certainly apply for that. I haven't seen any programs where the city could have applied for it yet.
Okay, okay. Well, you answered all of my questions in your report, so thank you very much, it was comprehensive. So I think we should be very thankful for this windfall. Thank you, Senator Portantino.
Indeed, indeed.
I was just gonna echo that we're grateful to have this, especially at this time, with the priorities that we have in front of us. So a very big thank you to Senator Portantino for establishing this.
Okay, great. I echo what everyone has said. This is a great initiative to work with our neighboring cities. We obviously have done our share of the work in building affordable housing, and as we've had discussions and briefings, and as we look at what our budget forecasts are, we see that doing more is gonna go, become increasingly difficult with the rising costs of real estate and property, just the difficulty or the scarcity of it. Having an additional boost from the state helps, and hopefully our neighbors will also take advantage of it. So with that, we have a City Council Resolution Approving the Establishment of the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust, and again, thank you to Senator Portantino for this. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll move the resolution.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second by Councilmember Divine, and then seconded by Councilmember Brotman. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmembers Asaturnia.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Kasakian.
Yes, thank you. And then the next one is council motion appointing council members to serve as a representative and also designating an alternate.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Brotman. He'll be our mayor, and I think he would make a great representative on this board.
Okay, and anyone for an alternate?
If Councilmember Asatrian is interested. I'm actually interested in representing Glendale, but if this is important to Councilmember Brotman and this is what he wants to do, then I'm happy to support my colleague.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is something I have been interested in for a while, following, you know, the news of this JPA, and I think I can bring a lot with my financial and economic background, and also some of the experience working in a JPA, with the Arroyo Verdugo's Communities JPA. So I would very much like to do it, and I appreciate the nomination.
And Councilmember Asatrian, would you accept the nomination to be the alternate?
Yes.
To this?
Thank you.
All right. Normally, it would be ideal to have our full council on something like this, because we're kind of in the dark as to whether Councilmember Najarian would want to, but he is away on city business on metro. I'm getting the umpire or the catcher's signals from City Manager Galanian that he did not express an interest, but regardless, it would be great to have our full council for this appointment and this vote. But it sounds like we have some consensus, along with Councilmember Asatrian's acceptance serve as alternate. I know that incoming Mayor Dan Brotman would make a strong voice on this body, along with the other appointees from the other cities. We see Mayor Gordo on there, and of course, he just served as our Housing Authority Chair. So with that, if there are no other nominations from anyone else, we will go to a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Asaturnia.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Kasakian.
Yes, thank you. All right, that was easy. Let's go to second item on the agenda.
The second item is Community Development Regarding Public Hearing on Submission of Substantial Amendment to the CDBG, ESG, and HOME-2021-2022 Annual Action Plan, allocating HOME-ARP funds in the amount of $5,109,346. A City Council Motion to Approve a Substantial Amendment to CDBG, ESG, and HOME Annual Action Plan for Program Year 2021-2022, allocating HOME-ARP funds in the amount of $5,109,346, and to authorize submission of the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan substantial amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. B Housing Authority Motion to Approve a Substantial Amendment to CDBG, ESG, and HOME Annual Action Plan for Program Year 2021-2022, allocating HOME-ARP funds in the amount of $5,109,346, and to authorize submission of the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan substantial amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, and Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, members of City Council, Housing Chair Brotman, members of the Housing Authority. I'm just gonna go directly to Pamela Jackson, our Housing Coordinator, to present the item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, Housing Authority Chair Brotman, members of the City Council and Housing Authority. I'm here to seek your approval to substantially amend the CDBG, ESG, and HOME-2021-22 Annual Action Plan. With this amendment, we will submit to HUD a HOMARP allocation plan. So, let's see. Is the PowerPoint not working? There we go. Yeah. Okay. So, the HOMARP program is part of the American Rescue Plan, which was approved by the United States Congress in 2021. $5 billion in funding from this legislation was appropriated for homelessness assistance and supportive services. That funding was set up to be administered through the Home Investment Partnerships Program, which is the home program, and Glendale is set to receive a little over $5.1 million in funding through the HOMARP program. So the first thing we'll talk about is who can, who will benefit from this funding. The program requires us to spend funding on specific eligible populations, and in this slide, you'll see a listing of those populations. They include individuals and families who meet the McKinney-Vento definition of being homeless or at risk of homelessness. Also, individuals who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking, and other populations, including families that require services or housing assistance to prevent homelessness, and those who are at greatest risk of housing instability. And this includes households with an income at or below 30% of the area median income, or AMI, and who are severely cost-burdened, and it also includes households between 30% and 50% of AMI who meet at least one of the conditions listed under the McKinney-Vento definition of at risk of homelessness. And finally, any veteran or family that includes a veteran member who meet the criteria of one or more of the qualifying populations we just highlighted. HOMARP funding may be spent on eligible activities, which include administrative costs with a 15% cap, development of rental housing, and this includes acquisition, new development, or substantial rehab, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, acquisition and development of non-congreg... acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter, and nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance. So in order to receive this funding, we have to submit an allocation plan to HUD as a substantial amendment. And in preparation of that allocation plan, HUD required us to consult with agencies within our continuum of care, as well as other public and private agencies that address the needs of the qualifying populations. We were required to seek public participation, including a 15-day public comment period, and to conduct this public hearing. And we were required to conduct a needs assessment and gap analysis using current housing data on qualifying populations. So in terms of the consultation that we did, we created a survey for organizations within our continuum of care to gauge the needs and gaps in services for qualifying populations that they serve. And some of the feedback that we received is highlighted here. Some organizations said that we have insufficient services for homelessness prevention, that there's a need for more homeless outreach services, especially during non-working hours. There's a need for short-term housing vouchers, and a need for more affordable housing units. Others said there are few opportunities for Glendale residents to participate in low-income housing due to the limited number of affordable units in the city. We had a comment that senior services were needed to help seniors find apartments and apply for these affordable units when they do become available. And another comment regarding the domestic violence population, that they feel more at risk of being stopped by police and face discrimination from landlords and companies once they are identified as a domestic violence survivor. Moving on to the data that we collected. So the first slide shows some of the data that we analyzed from the homeless population. The numbers that you see reflect our most recent published homeless count in 2022. And as you'll see, we looked at the number of beds and units that are available for that population, and emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive services, and other permanent housing. We compared those numbers to the number of homeless individuals and families that were identified in the 2022 count. And while we didn't find any gaps in the number of beds available, we found a gap of 107 units specifically for homeless individuals. And there's a distinction between homeless adults and homeless families. So the gap was with the adults. And we also looked at current numbers from the U.S. Census American Community Survey, and the Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy. We compared the numbers in those reports and with the total number of rental units in Glendale to those who are at risk of homelessness. And we found that there are approximately 20, over 20,000 households that are experiencing at least one or more severe housing problem that puts them at risk of homelessness. And finally, we created a citizen survey, which we sent to over 16,000 people on our Affordable Housing Interest List. We received 834 responses. And here you'll see a summary of what we found. The majority of respondents reported being either extremely low income or very low income. And the breakdown is there, 54.6% reported having an income at or below 30% of AMI. Of that group, 88% were Glendale residents. 89% reported paying more than 30% of their income toward rent. 36% reported being at risk of homelessness. 11 respondents reported being homeless. Two reported being veterans, and two reported being domestic violence survivors. And then the other group, 27.2% of respondents reported having an income between 30 and 50% of AMI. Of that group, 77% were Glendale residents. 90% reported paying more than 30% of their income toward rent. 20.8% reported being at risk of homelessness. Two reported being veterans, and five reported being domestic violence survivors. We didn't have anyone report being homeless in that particular income group. So based on the consultation, the data we analyzed, and the survey results we received, we found that the biggest gap in funding was for people who were at risk of homelessness, and other populations at greatest risk of housing instability, which includes those who are at 30% of AMI. And as a result, we are recommending, using this funding, to create a minimum of 25 to 30 units of affordable housing for this population. Additional funding sources would be used in conjunction with this HOMARP funding to create more units of affordable housing. And the funding may be used on our Piedmont property to serve seniors at 30% of AMI. And again, 15% of this funding would go toward admin costs. So with your approval, we would need to submit this allocation plan by Friday of this week. And based on your recommendation, we'll do so. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay. Who among my colleagues and our Housing Authority members would like to go first? Anyone having questions or comments? I see Councilmember.
I just have comments.
All right, let me go to Councilmember Asatrian this time first, and then I'll go to Councilmember Brotman and Devine. Questions or comments?
So I think that one thing I'd like for us to look at is, in the executive summary portion, you know, it heavily talks about funding going to homelessness and shelters and services. As we're going through, if these funds are going to be allocated to the Piedmont project, or any of our senior residents, and those who qualify, for us to be able to set aside maybe 15, 20 units for seniors specifically, who are on the verge of becoming homeless, or are already unhoused, and working with our homeless services department in the city of Glendale to identify those individuals would be one of the comments that I have. And then, I don't know if we're able to do something similar, if we are going to designate any funding to general affordable housing, other projects that incorporate that some sort of percentage, also designated for domestic violence victims and veterans. I know the numbers weren't too many on your presentation.
Right, so we can definitely highlight those populations that you just mentioned. They're part of the qualifying populations that we're supposed to serve with this funding. And so if we did put it into a project like Piedmont, we could set up the marketing plan and the tenant selection plan so that it focuses on that specific population of seniors.
I'm looking for maybe like a set number that we can have specifically for them, as like safeguarded, and on the rest, however your normal process would be.
Yeah. So as, when we get to that point, I think when we're talking about who exactly will serve with that project, we can definitely give you those numbers, a recommendation for specifically how many people we would set aside for seniors in that category.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think that's also a good idea, but Councilmember Brotman.
I'm just a little confused. So you talk about putting it into the Piedmont project. Is there a funding gap in the Piedmont project?
Well, it's.
Or does it allow us to do more below, you know, extremely low income, or to shift that mix, or what?
Okay, so I probably would defer to Mike to talk about the financing on that project. I know we're in the preliminary stages of it. But we talk about the Piedmont, the Piedmont project, because I don't know if you need to repeat your question, but are we okay?
Is there a funding gap?
Okay.
That this is looking to fill, is that not, is the funding not there for that?
Right. So, good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian and Chair Brotman, City Council Members, Housing Authority Board Members, I'm Mike Fortney, Principal Housing Project Manager. The answer to the question is yes. There's always a gap on a project. So we acquired the property, and then we always come back to you for gap financing. So we're going to do that. We haven't issued the RFQ yet. I'm going to bring that to you next month. So three months after that, we'll probably get responses from the RFQ. And the different developers that respond will tell us what they think that gap will be. Pamela's correct in the briefing that we don't know exactly what the gap will be, and we don't know if we're going to put all of the ARP dollars into Piedmont, but I'm inclined to say most likely. Because when you, well, first, when you take 15% off of 5.1 million, you're left with about 4.3. Now, we can maybe do better and use less admin, but say 4.5 million, that does not go very far. When you're targeting 30% AMI, at each AMI that you target, the gap goes bigger as the AMI goes down. So 4.3 is not going to go very far. I was estimating maybe 20, 25 units, when we're looking at a project of roughly 60 units. So I'm inclined to think that most, not all the ARP dollars will go into that.
So trying to simplify this, and I think what I heard Councilmember Brotman also kind of point to is the following, that by using this funding, we can have a lower, or more severely income-strapped residence qualify for the units, versus someone who's making 80% of the median income.
Yeah, we would not be able to use these funds on that population.
Yeah, we would.
It would have to be 30%.
But by doing that, Piedmont then allows for more folks in those particular categories, which would actually kind of technically speak to what Councilmember Asatrian was asking as well. Folks who are extremely low income or 30% of AMI.
I think my, if I can clarify, I'm looking that we have a designated number of units within the Piedmont project. If it is going to go to Piedmont, for example, that we are, your department is working with our homeless and community services department to identify seniors that are either homeless or on the verge of being homeless, and having a set number of these units go, whether it's 15 or 20, or whatever we can agree to, have that go to that population.
Yeah, that would be a part of the tenant.
Aside from the 30 AMI.
Right, we could definitely address that during the tenant selection process. And we have other projects like that, that before we offer units to the waitlist, it first goes to a continuum of care to see if there are any homeless individuals or families that can go into the units in that project. We can do something similar to that on this project for seniors, you know. So there, we have options.
I would just add, I'm taking the RFQ and bringing it to you on April 18th, place that's scheduled for now. I'll have some discussions with other staff, and I'll give you a number that I recommend for Piedmont.
You know, I thought about this after our meeting with Supervisor Barker today, when they were highlighting the efforts in the homeless category today during the meeting. And one of those areas was the, you know, senior population that is on the verge of homelessness, or is already homeless, so.
Yes. Councilmember Brotman and then Councilmember Devine.
I guess where I was coming from and asking the question is, you know, I kind of see Piedmont as, you know, we're doing it already. Maybe I'm counting my chickens before they hatch. And, you know, and I'm hearing you talking about putting this money into Piedmont. So I'm thinking, you know, what, at the margin, what additional housing beyond what we were already planning to do could this provide for? So if the answer, so I guess part of the answer is, don't count on Piedmont because we don't have the money for it yet. Or maybe with this money, we can allocate more units to that 30 AMI and below? That's basically what you're saying, right?
Yes, so, say again, it's 4.5 million of this, all of this money that would go into Piedmont. Some of it would be to normal gap finance project, and some of it would be to further it down to the 30%. But I'm, my feeling is we will most likely have to put additional funds beyond the ARP dollars, if we fund that many 30% units in that project.
Okay, and if we didn't have this money, then what would, what would we be talking about with Piedmont?
If we were not, I would still recommend it be a senior project, given the existing unit.
It has to be a senior project, right?
It has to be, right.
Yeah.
And the neighborhood, there's a lot of reasons why it's still be senior. We just, we would put it out to RFQ, and we would encourage the lower affordability, and then just evaluate the proposals as they came. But without these ARP dollars, we would not get.
As many.
As many extremely low incomes.
Okay, so we are getting an incremental benefit from this. That's where I was getting at.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, Councilmember Devine?
I just want to say that I think the more of those units we can afford to put in Piedmont, the more we should. I think the gap numbers are alarming. The gap numbers are alarming. So I think we have to do our best to make sure that we get as many units as we can. And speaking of Supervisor Barker, the meeting this morning, we did, and I noticed in the consultation, where a couple of the gaps were a need for more outreach services during non-working hours. And our Glendale Police Department is about to put in a program for the weekend. So that's a plus. And I know that we mentioned to Supervisor Barker this morning that we wanted more, the hotel room key program back in Glendale. So hopefully, those two will come to fruition, and we'll get more, more units for more people. Thank you.
Yes, Authority Member Atenean.
Yeah, looking at the qualifying populations, you've mentioned everything, you know, domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking. I thought substance abusers were in this category. Are we recognizing them as a homeless qualification?
For HOMARP funding, no, specifically these populations that we indicate. I mean, yeah. So it does not call out for substance abuse. But the funds do, could go towards some supportive services. But, but no, it does not call out for that specifically. Okay? Any other questions?
Yeah, actually, so I do have a question that came up when I was reading the report and during this presentation, I was reminded of it. So this is only based on anecdotal evidence, and just a couple of conversations that have happened over the course of the last few months. And it's not specific to Glendale. I've also run into some folks from Los Angeles, who at one point had Section 8 vouchers, or they came up in the queue to receive a Section 8 voucher. According to what was told to me, they started trying to find an apartment that would qualify for that. And given COVID, given the scarcity of available units, some time had elapsed. And according to the individuals that spoke to me, that they lost their voucher availability. Do we have any indication if that's been the case here in Glendale, if anyone, because of a difficulty to find? Because one of the things that we're looking for, for consultation, is senior services need to help seniors find apartments and apply for affordable housing units when available. This seems like it would be one of those areas, even though it may not be specifically to this item. Do we know of anyone in Glendale that has had that issue? Or how many, or how many people may have dropped off or lost their ability to have their Section 8 voucher?
Offhand, I don't know whether or not there's been an individual that has not been able to utilize their voucher, and as a result, return it to the city unused. What we do have is we offer up to six months for them to be able to go out and secure a unit. A couple of weeks ago, when we brought the Section 8 Annual Plan to you for approval, oh, I'm sorry, we're bringing the Section 8 Annual Plan to you for approval. And we will be informing you of our intent to address the payment standards as well, and increase that up. And that would also help that population. We do know that those are struggling, people are, some people are struggling to find and secure units. And we're trying to make it as helpful as possible by taking a few actions to address that. But ultimately, we have only six months maximum that we can offer. And so we tend to see clients come back after two months. We'll extend it out another two months, provide more services that we might have to them in referrals, and keep going up until the six-month mark. the six-month mark. I'd have to ask staff as to whether or not there's been anyone who has not been able to utilize their voucher and turn it back in.
Okay, well, I'll wait for that report then to get some clarification if that is something that's impacting us in Glendale. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there aren't any, we have a council motion and a housing authority motion. Who would like to make the city council motion?
Just, it was a public hearing, I wasn't sure if it was open, but if it not opened, then close it.
Well, yes, we hadn't opened it, but we'll consider it opened. Do we have any callers on this item?
We do not.
Okay, and there are no speakers in the audience, so we'll close the public hearing. And let us entertain a council motion.
I'll move it.
Okay, who will second the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Asatryan and seconded by Councilmember Devine. May we have the roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmembers Asatryan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Kasakian.
Yes, thank you, and may we have a motion for the Housing Authority.
I'll move it. I'll second.
Okay, moved by Authority Member Devine and seconded by Authority Member Asatryan.
Yeah, and roll call, please.
Housing Authority Members Ajinian.
Yes.
Asatryan.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian. Harazian.
Yes.
Chair Brotman.
Yes.
All right, thank you to staff, and that concludes what was on the agenda for this joint public meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for council.
So moved.
Second.
I'll move to adjourn for housing.
Okay, and a second for housing?
Again.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.